Good evening and welcome to the June twenty six, two thousand and twenty-three city council meeting. I am Mayor Ross and tonight's city council meeting is being recorded and will be available on the city's website. Welcome to everyone. Thank you for joining us. City Clerk Dean, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Benson.
Here.
Councilmember Watton. Councilmember Holloway.
Yeah.
Councilmember Mayhew.
Here.
Councilmember Washington.
Here.
Councilmember Christensen.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
And Mayor Ross.
I am here and Councilmember Walton has requested to be excused tonight. So is there a motion to excuse Councilwoman Walton?
So moved.
Moved by Councilwoman Benson, second by Councilwoman Johnson. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? So it's unanimous and his absence is excused. Council, please stand with me and join, say the Pledge of Allegiance and Councilwoman Christensen, would you please lead us?
Sure. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We've now moved to our first item of regular business is to approve the agenda. Councilmember, have a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Johnson, second by Mayor Pro Tim Holloway. Is there any discussion? Mayor Pro Tim Holloway.
Just a couple of changes from that as coming out of F and A committee. Would like to add the Fire Lieutenant badge pinning on at the end of appointments. Would like to remove the Sound City Association Regional Improvement Presentation as they are not here this evening. And executive session at the end of the agenda for matters concerning labor relations. May I have a second?
Second.
So moved by Mayor Pro Tim Holloway, second by. It's the Council of Washington, because it's like. Councilwoman Christensen, did you have something else?
No, I just had a question. Was that to remove the executive session at the end?
Is to add.
To add. To add an executive session at the end. Okay.
Right. So we were adding executive session, the adding the pinning of the lieutenant, which everyone saw that it's on the agenda, but we didn't cover it in F and A. So we're just making it formal. And then we are removing the presentation by Sound City Association, which they will actually come and join us this fall. When things less busy. So any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? All right. Motion passes and the agenda is approved as stated. So next item, regular business is the appointment to Economic Development Commission. So purpose, purpose of this agenda is to confirm the mayor's appointment of Nicole Pass to the Economic Development Commission. Nicole is the new Public Relations Director for Snoqualmie Valley Hospital. And she has a master's degree in strategic communications and business administration. It has a passion for building stakeholder engagement and advancing business priorities. So her experience includes healthcare and nonprofit, including the Elma Chamber of Commerce. Council may have a motion to confirm the recommendation.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Benson, second by Councilwoman Christensen. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? So it passes unanimously and Nicole Pass is appointed to position number five. And do we know she?
She's not online.
She's not online. Okay. So we appreciate her stepping up to serve. Moving on to interim fire chief appointment. Mayor Holloway, would you please read the summary? The pro team.
I'm promoted all of a sudden, all right?
There you go.
Do we have it up on the screen? As opposed to me fishing around? I'm not gonna be able to read that either. Okay. Commission, commission and committee members are appointed by the mayor and subject to confirmation by city council. Well, that was the wrong one. Keep going.
There you are. Yes.
Fire Chief Mark Carrer is resigning as Fire Chief City Snoqualmie effective June twenty ninth, as he's taken a position in California as Fire Chief, Fire District near Santa Cruz. The mayor has chosen Deputy Chief Mike Bailey to serve as the interim fire chief until a plan to provide for a permanent replacement is made. Is there a motion? Can you scroll down further, please? Nope, proposed action. Keep going down, down, down.
There you go, right there.
Move to appoint Michael Bailey as the city Snoqualmie interim fire chief effective July one, two thousand and twenty-three. Sorry, chief, about that reading. May I have a second?
Second.
A second.
Okay, so. Moved by Mayor Pro Tim Holloway, second by Councilwoman, oh, Christensen.
Johnson.
They're all. They've been talking.
I think Benson was first.
Washington.
There we go.
Definitely Washington.
Washington. So, um, so just so deep. Deputy Chief Bailey has been with Snoqualmie Fire for twenty-four years. He's been in administrative role since two thousand and fourteen and served as interim fire chief for most of two thousand and twenty-one. He has a bachelor's degree in political science with an emphasis in public administration and has extensive leadership experience in our department. Councilors, any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Is unanimous. So our deputy chief is now our interim fire chief, which I say a couple of words. Which also gets you up here for the next thing.
Never known him to just say two words.
Thank you, council. I appreciate that. Obviously, big shoes to fill with Chief Carreras leaving, but I learned a lot from him over the last eight years. And I'm confident we can keep this thing going the way we have been and continue the excellent service that our department provides to the city. So thank you for the appointment. I appreciate it.
I'm gonna interject there real quick. So, um, so I'd also like to thank Chief Carrera, who is not here this evening. I believe he's already in his new place, but thanking for his service to Snoqualmie and to our fire department for nearly a decade. He was instrumental in increasing staff levels due to a successful public safety levy and having a robust volunteer program and he implemented the two thousand and fourteen fireworks ordinance in twenty and in helped the get through the process of accreditation in two thousand and nineteen. So we just wish him the best. And we know that we're going to be in good hands now with our interim fire chief. So thank you.
The next thing we have on the agenda tonight is lieutenant promotion. So if you could come stand up here next to me. My goal is to see if I can make him as red as his helmet tonight. Think I'm already halfway there. As you know, the department has had two vacancies for the last nine months at the lieutenant rank. I would like to publicly publicly thank firefighter Robert Laswell and firefighter Ben Parker for stepping into the long-term actor role during those nine months. It's not an easy position to be in and both stepped up and did an amazing job. Early this month, three firefighters tested for the position of lieutenant. This test consisted of work history rating, a tactical incident command scenario, customer service assessment and personnel problem. Following the assessment, the Civil Service Commission certified all three candidates to be placed on a promotional list. Chief Carrer and I interviewed all three candidates. Following those interviews and after confirmation by the mayor, the chief and I selected Ben Parker and Bill Wisham for promotion to the rank to the rank of lieutenant effective July first. Unfortunately, Ben was scheduled to be with us tonight also, but he's home ill. So tonight we're just celebrating Bill's achievement. We'll get, uh, we'll get Ben at a later time. Just a little bit about Bill. He joined the Snoqualmie Fire Department on February fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen. Before coming to Snoqualmie, Bill was a volunteer firefighter EMT for over ten years with Duval Fire District forty-five, as well as a cement truck driver with Cadman and a seasonal wildland firefighter with Glacier Peak Wildfire. Bill is certified as a firefighter two, rope and swiftwater technician and a wildland red card and engine boss. Bill has served as an acting officer since January first of this year, is the program lead for our community education and public relations, is also the union representative for the firefighters. Besides his passion for wildland firefighting, Bill brings to the team a systematic approach to problem solving, calmness, the ability to listen, exceptional soft skills and a high social emotional intelligence to the position. Bill currently is living in Lake Stevens with his wife Chelsea and his daughter Willow, hiding behind him there. So now I'd like to have the mayor come up. We're gonna have the mayor present Bill as new helmet. And as in tradition in the fire service, firefighters select a loved one to pin on their badge upon their initial hiring or on promotion. And wisely this evening, Bill has chosen his wife to pin on his badge. Go ahead and stand up there in the. Oh, perfect. We'll have the whole family. So if you just wanna stand there, then the mayor will help you out. Face, go ahead and face, you guys face each other. There you go. Well, first we got it. Bill is also on duty today, so he's doing double duty. He's still gotta, he's gotta take the old firefighter one off. That's good. Just go ahead and have it. There we go. That's perfect. That'll stay. The mayor's got your helmet there.
Nice, very nice.
So congratulations to Bill and his family and the department looks forward to many years with Lieutenant Bill Wisham on our leadership teams. Yeah, we'll take a quick minute for pictures and.
Yeah.
That's a good idea.
Yes.
Okay.
Sit down, you're too old for this, really.
You keep up that teasing, all right?
We do have a long agenda this evening, so you don't have to feel compelled to stay. Except you.
Wouldn't open up for me, like we're weak.
Mr. Gamble, would you please bring up the signup sheets if there's any names on it, please, for the public hearing?
Very bad. I'm not using my city one right now.
Right, nobody. Okay. Next is the public hearing portion of our meeting. Tonight we have the public hearing regarding AB twenty-three dash zero seven six, six-year transportation improvement program. So the public hearing is now open and as proceeding, the community is invited to provide comments regarding the proposal to adopt resolution number sixteen fifty-six, six-year transportation improvement program, also known as the STIP, for the period two thousand and twenty-four through two thousand and twenty-nine. Those wishing to speak for public comment must sign up. And speakers will be called in order according to the signup sheet. For online attendees, please raise your hand. Those that are wishing to provide public comment and your name will be added to the in-person signup sheet and we will alternate speakers by calling on one person for in-person signup and then one person for signing up online. So please state your name and city residents, direct your comments to the council as a whole and not to individual members. And please note that this is not a time to ask questions of the council, mayor or staff. And you will receive three minutes to speak. So is there? City Clerk? No one on, okay. No one has signed up in council chambers? And we will look at the any persons online that would like to sign up to talk regarding the STIP. I'm not seeing anyone. Right? So we have come to the, to the end of our public hearing. We did not have any speakers this evening or public comment, so we are closed at seven fifteen. Next item is public comment. So at this time, we'll provide time for residents to comment on items not on the agenda. And a few ground rules, Snoqualmie residents who are not present have the right to how their elected representatives perform their duties on behalf of the city in efficient orderly manner. Therefore, you'll have three minutes to speak each. Please wait to be recognized and state your name and city, direct your comments to the council as a whole and not to individual members. And please note this is not a time to ask questions of the council mayor or staff. So with that, is there anyone in the council chambers that would like to make public comment? If so, please raise your hand. These are for items that on the agenda. Is there anyone online like to make public comment? If so, please raise your hand. Okay. Okay. I'm not seeing anyone that is raising their hand for public comment. Okay, moving on to consent agenda. The extended agenda contains approval of June twelve, two thousand and twenty-three, city council regular meeting minutes, approval of the claims report dated June twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-three, AB twenty-three dash zero seven seven Riverwalk Property Acquisition, AB twenty-three dash zero eight three, awarding RRJ Company a contract for two thousand and twenty-three urban forestry improvement. AB twenty-three dash zero eight four Fire Department Strategic Plan Extension Resolution and AB twenty-three dash zero eight five Madrona Law Group First Amendment Agreement. So is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So, second.
Moved by Councilwoman Christensen, second by Mayor Pro Tim Holloway. Is there any public comment regarding these items? If so, it'd be two minutes. I'm not seeing anyone raise their hand in city hall. Anyone online? And nor anyone online. Councilors, any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Okay, the consent agenda is approved. Community reports. Is there any report from public safety?
I would just like to take a moment to thank Captain Lynch in the police department for being, I guess, going really far above and beyond in terms of soliciting resident feedback. We were able to get a number of folks writing emails and coming into public safety last week, and I think it was really helpful as we were looking about, or I guess not my most eloquent this evening, sorry, as we were trying to evaluate the potential parking permit program. It was very helpful, very valuable to get feedback from the folks who would be impacted since obviously we'd heard one from one side and not from the other. And so, yeah, I just wanted to take a moment to thank Captain Lynch again, because he really truly went above and beyond in terms of even having invitations that were ultimately posted on residence stores. And so that was very valuable. So thank you. And nothing further.
Right? Next item, community development committees. Is there any comment or report from community development?
No report.
Okay, next report is Parks and Public Works Committee, AB twenty-three dash zero seven six, six-year transportation improvement program for the period two thousand and twenty-four through two thousand and twenty-nine. Councilwoman Benson, would you please read the summary and motion?
Yeah. This agenda bill presents the city's six-year transportation improvement plan for the period two thousand and twenty-four through two thousand and twenty-nine. The six-year plan is updated annually following public hearing and council approval. The tip will be submitted to Wash Dot on June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three. Do we go with proposed action one or two? Which one, which one are we doing today? Is it one today? Conduct a public hearing on the.
We already did.
We already did that, right?
One.
Okay, so it's two that we're on. Move to adopt resolution number sixteen fifty-six, adopting the STIP for the period two thousand and twenty-four through two thousand and twenty-nine and authorize the mayor to sign. Do I have a second?
Second.
So it's moved by Councilwoman Benson, second by Mayor Pro Tim Holloway to adopt the six-year transportation improvement program. Is there any public comment regarding this item? Knowing that we just went through a public hearing, we have one other additional chance. Not seeing anyone online, raise your hand, nor in council chambers. Okay, councilors, any discussion? We do have Dylan Gamble here as the CFP manager, who would be happy to answer any questions regarding this step.
Can we, uh, can we bring this step up at least? I guess, can you do that, Anthony? And Chair, can I speak while that's occurring?
Yes, Mayor Pro Tim Holloway.
Okay. So I really wanted us to at least be aware of the STIP as a council. This is how we communicate to the state and others. Often this will go to the PSRC or federal, things like that, of what our city priorities are as far as transportation projects concerned. Hey, uh, and what you see here is a list of those, they are prioritized, uh, the prioritization is loose. Priorities will change as we go on. So this is just momentary best guess. But it also gives an idea of when we're gonna start, finish, and what kind of funding we may or may not have in mind in regards to these projects. Okay. Staff has done a great job of pulling together stips from past couple of years, kind of consolidating those together and bring forward a new step to shoot, to have with us and discuss with committee and everything else. Good, good job. First off, uh, I do want at least one, I'm, I'm not gonna ask for removal, but I do wanna raise a concern that, uh, the, uh, archway or how you, I remember how we took it over Center Boulevard was an item some six or seven years ago that we had on a step actually made motions toward and decided not to at that stage. So I asked that you do go do that, it's low enough that I'm not sure we're gonna get to it tomorrow, but that you go look at those issues we had six years ago and why we decided not to. There are issues, there are safety issues and traffic issues that go along with that, that we need to be cognizant of as we move forward. Other than that, this was a great, great thing for us to do and something we need to do on a yearly basis.
Any other comments? Councilwoman Johnson.
Yes, I do apologize. I had to miss our last Parks Public Works meeting. But I was just wondering about the Fisher Creek intersection. We talked about that in previous meeting. If, I didn't see it on the list now. Is there just a reason why we decide not to include it or, or is it on there and I just missed it?
No, I wasn't sure if I should capture certain aspects of private development within this, but rather this is all public. And so when I reviewed other jurisdictions, like I looked at a bunch of the cities, they really were capturing either local as in either city, county and or state projects. And so I wasn't sure in the exact details of it. It's something that could be added on at any moment. It wouldn't have any negative impacts to the project as this is strategically looking at projects that we would get funded. A lot of the ways that this document is very helpful for us in the city and staff is to get funding for public projects. And I don't know that a private development classified itself on this one. So that was my. Yeah.
All right. So my recollection was that the development was not going to play, pay for the entire thing. I thought they were only gonna pay for a portion. Am I misremembering?
I think it was a portion, but I'm not sure who else.
So in that case, there would be a public portion perhaps to that. And because of that, I wonder if that's a line that we'd wanna add.
And do you, do you have a proposal priority where you would add it?
Stick it at the end.
Okay.
Is there a motion in there?
Um, yes, uh, boot, oh boy, I need to, I need to type it out. Sorry. I think it's called Fisher Creek. Is that right?
The Fisher intersection.
Okay. Move to add the Fisher intersection as the lowest priority.
Second.
I'll second.
It's definitely Washington.
Moved by Councilwoman Johnson and moved by Councilwoman Washington to add Fisher intersection. So I guess Fisher's intersection improvements.
Sure.
Or it's be a light or what's it, what do you want to do there?
Maybe just leave it at improvements and let when the time comes, those who need to decide what those improvements are, make that decision.
Okay. Is that an addendum in addition to it?
Move to amend the motion to add improvements after the word intersection.
Second. Moved by Councilwoman Johnson, second by Councilwoman Christensen to add the word improvements. So it's a little more clear. So thank you.
I appreciate it.
Any discussion regarding that? Reprocham Holloway.
So this is right now where we have the hawk signal. Uh, I guess I would like to motion at least on the description that this is contingent upon development driving that need. Right now, the warrants do not drive the need for light at that intersection. That's a decision we already made.
Yep. Councilwoman Johnson.
I, I think that's implied in the in the whole idea behind having improvements there with the development agreements, et cetera. So if you, if you need.
I think it's implied for us. It may not be implied for those reading this list cold, and I know some will read it in another manner.
Motion's up. So what is the addition then?
Pending, pending development requiring alteration. Something along those lines.
Okay. So it's the whole motion then.
Well, it was contingent on development.
Contingent upon development requirements. Let's put it that way. Again, the, the, the intersection does not warrant a stoplight until such time as development on the cross street comes into effect, Snoqualmie Hill West. At that stage, we really need to look at that intersection and do something different.
Okay, so was there a second on this?
Second.
Let's move by Mayor Tim Holloway, saying by Councilwoman Mayhew to add that additional wording, so to kind of dependent on development driven, basically, but we have a, we can read back the motion in a moment.
Think you know the intent.
Other, yes. Any other discussion regarding this? Okay, so would you please read the city clerk? Dean, please read the motion.
I don't really know where we are, but to adopt resolution number fifteen sixty-five, adopting a six-year transportation improvement program for the period two thousand and twenty-four through two thousand and twenty-nine and authorize the mayor to sign, adding Fisher intersection improvements and contingent on development requirements. That is all of it.
As lowest priority. Does one thing at the end.
Okay. Okay. Any further discussion on them? Any further discussion on the whole?
Order. I think we have to do all the dinosaurs.
Okay. On the, all those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, nay?
Was that on Councilmember Holloway's?
That's always.
That's always. And then regarding the
addition of the work.
It was development and then in adding improvements, all those favors, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? And then the original addition to the motion, which is Councilwoman Johnson's. And that was Fisher intersection improvements at the lowest priority. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? So getting back to the STIP itself. Any further comments or discussion, Councilwoman Benson?
Yeah, I just wanna say that, you know, there's well now thirty things on this list and, um, the, the task of prioritizing them one through thirty is a really challenging one. And, um, if all of us were to do it, we would all do it slightly differently. I, I, I think it'd be like hitting the lottery if we all did it exactly the same way. So I think that the way that, um, Mr. Gamble, uh, put these in order really makes a lot of sense. And thank you for being so responsive to, uh, to the suggestions you've gotten. Really excellent job.
Great. Councilwoman Johnson.
Just one other clarification from our previous discussion. My understanding was it's not like they're gonna say, well, you know, we think we could get the funding for number ten, but we gotta wait until number nine gets done. Otherwise, we're not gonna do anything. It's not how it's gonna work. The prioritization is just a guide.
Right.
Right, absolutely. Any other comments? Great. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? All right, the, the new, the STIP is approved for this year's two thousand and twenty-four to two through two thousand and twenty-nine. Thank you, Mr. Gamble. Okay, next item is Parks Public Works, AB twenty-three dash zero seven eight, awarding prospect construction, a contract for the water. A contract for the water reclamation facility phase three improvements. And we can have Constable Benson, would you please read the summary and motion?
Yeah. This agenda bill seeks to adopt resolution sixteen fifty-five, awarding water reclamation facility phase three improvements. Construction contract to Prospect Construction Incorporated. The WRF phase three improvements will increase sewer treatment capacity, enhance performance, and replace critical components that are nearing the end of their expected service life. And this is long, sorry. Move to adopt resolution number sixteen fifty-five, awarding water reclamation facility phase three improvements to Prospect Construction Incorporated and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
You by Constable Benson, saying my mirror pro Tim Holloway for the awarding prospect construction contract for water reclamation facility phase three improvements. Is there any public comment regarding this item? Seeing anyone in City Hall raise their hand? Anyone online? If so, please raise your hand. All right, I'm not seeing anyone. So council, any discussion? We do have Andrew Vining, our project engineer here to answer any questions. Mayor Pro Tim Holloway.
Okay, so I'm the fault. This is not on consent agenda. Let's put it that way. But please be aware. This project is above estimate and above budget at this stage. So we will be pulling budget from other places to backfill this. Okay, please be aware also, we're going to have significant costs in other projects. We've seen the inflation of late. We've had discussions around labor. We know where the labor costs are going. We are in a budget crunch. May not feel like it yet, but you're going to get to it real soon. Okay, so my tolerance level, if anything, is over budget. It's not a consent. Want to bring it into our discussion. Right, that's one. Two, given that condition, we do have option B on here. At least one part of that option B is there for site security in which we have had issues. What again, if I'm in a budget crunch position, what is nice to have is often what I don't go get. I manage it the way I've been managing it today. So in lieu of that and in light that we ought to be in that mode, I do, let me get down here. I would like to motion the removal of option B one, site security improvements. For a total price of one hundred and twenty-seven five, one hundred and twenty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars. Let me have a second.
Second.
Moved by my pro Holloway, second by Constable Mayhew to remove option B one. Which is security. For that, Constable Benson, do you have comments regarding that?
Is that, is now appropriate time for that?
Yeah.
I'm, I am reticent to knock this off. Because from the, the sense that I got from staff, we're getting a very good deal on this particular portion of the, of the contract. And it's also really a public safety issue as well. It's, it's the water treatment plant. And if, if security around that is an issue, I, it feels to me like we should address that. And from what I understand, because it's part of a larger contract, we're getting a, a much better deal on this than we would if we were to do it later on its own. But people who know this better than I can speak to that. Those, those are my thoughts.
And I concur with your points.
That's. Yeah, just to follow up, we have a number of staff here to, to answer questions. Dan Malam, director from Arch two engineering, he helped, they were on involved in phase one, phase two, and phase three. We also have Drew Bootey regarding finance questions. And our wastewater plant operator and sewer supervisor, Tom Holmes. The overall, we got competitive bids, three, three bidders threw down for this. And we've been seeing a lot of big projects similar to this one out there. And we were happy to see those three bids. The schedule B, as council member Benson mentioned, we feel that we have good pricing on that. We may still need to address these improvements through operational budget. And Tom Holmes would be able to speak a little bit to that. The headworks improvements are really essential. Those are the first line of defense. That's where wastewater comes into the plant and then goes through the oxidation ditches and the solids handling facility. So it's essentially the oil filter to your cars improvements. We want to keep those online. I might pass it to Dan if you have any summaries on the scheduled.
Hang on guys, I'm not, from the base project, there hasn't been any question. I've not raised questions in regards to the base project. Okay, so I don't know that we need to go in depth at this moment on the overall project. I just, I sometime want to get to bed tonight. It's totally self-serving. Um, so I, I do want to, you know, we do have, I have a motion on the floor. And I intentionally did that for the conversation. So I would appreciate the conversation of, you know, given where we think we are with budget and other things. Yes, this is a good deal on the security fence and everything else. Yes, there have been issues on site. But are we still in a position under which we are going to spend that, that money above and beyond the regular project cost we have here?
Constable Christensen.
Is it possible to get a little bit more information about the issues for security that we've had in the past and what we anticipate going forward to see if it's how much of a help the additional security would be?
When it were.
Constable Mayhew.
Is it because of the subject nature? I don't know what's about to be said, but I'm wondering if there is any allowance for this to be discussed in an executive session as I'd hate for us to. Depending on what's about to be said, I, I'm not sure that that should be publicly said. I don't know if we have to do that. I don't know if there's an option here, but just curious.
Last our, our city attorney, Lena.
Thank you, Mayor. What was the nature of the question that you wanted to have some discussion on?
The, the topic is security at the wastewater treatment plant. And the question that's been raised, not by me, but by someone else is what is the nature of those security problems? And because of that, I'm questioning, is that something?
It's a topic you can cover in executive session. Any kind of security to public infrastructure is something that can be discussed in a confidential setting. Depending on the nature of that discussion, if it's really about security risks, then yes, that's a very appropriate discussion for executive session.
Reverend Pro Tim Holloway. Oh.
Move to firemen still here? Move to go into executive session for fifteen minutes to discuss this item.
Second. Just move by Constable Mayhew, second by Constable Christian to move into executive session for about fifteen minutes.
I can give you the statutory site if you give me twenty seconds to finish getting there.
And he will read in the statutory site. Our city attorney laying a hand.
So it'd be RCW forty-two thirty-one, ten. A Romanate two. I, I.
Okay, so we are going to go into executive session for fifteen minutes. So we'll be back about seven fifty-five and.
Did we?
No, I'm sorry. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any pose, nay? Okay. So we will go into executive session. We will be back at seven fifty-five and we need to take this upstairs. Thank you. Okay, we have returned from executive session and we are reviewing the AB twenty-three dash zero seven eight, awarding prospect construction contract for the water reclamation facility phase three improvements. Councilors, any further discussion? Constable Mayhew.
Yeah, I just want to clarify, we're currently discussing the so-called little dinosaur that Mayor Potem Holloway raised, is that correct? Okay.
That's correct.
And can we just have that red back just so I could be clear on that?
Remove option B one, security.
Thank you.
Okay, for the discussion on that portion. Constable Benson.
Based on what I heard, I believe that this is a good investment of city resources to secure that facility. So I don't want to give away how I'm going to vote, but I'm going to vote against this motion.
Any other discussion regarding this item? All those in favors, say aye, approving this amended.
Aye.
All those favors, say, or all those opposed, say nay, please.
Nay, nay.
Right, so we had one eye and six nays. So that amendment, amendment does not pass. We went, we're pretend. Oh, five no's.
We're missing.
Missing.
Council member.
Yes, okay, five no's. And yes. Constable Mayhew.
Yeah, so there was a couple of things said that I didn't fully follow, but I just want to just spend a moment understanding. Is this agenda bill in its totality go beyond the appropriation or the budget that we've set? Because I thought I heard that it did. And I thought I heard something alarming that maybe we were going to somehow going to cover that out of the operating budget, which is something that if I heard correctly, is something I'm very much opposed to that notion. But I just want to make sure I understand whether they've got an issue here. I, I think if we do, we need to find the money from other capital projects. And I just want to spend a minute talking about that, if that's indeed an issue.
I think Budget Manager Bootey has covered this.
Hi, thank you very much for the question, Councilmember Mayhew. So as a part of the budget, or not, sorry, the budget, the agenda bill that we have here in the budget section, we have proposed some changes basically to the capital permit plan that council adopted. Really in August of last year. In essence, what we're proposing in order to cover this gap. Now, just to explain the gap to you guys right now, there's roughly a seven hundred eighty thousand dollar life of project budget shortfall right now, which is roughly five percent of the total project budget. But in addition to that, there's also a shortfall during this specific biennial. So what we're proposing to do is we're proposing to delay two projects. The ten forty zone booster pump station, as well as the ten forty zone reservoir addition project. Shifting those out so that we can use those dollars during this biennial to support this project. That gets you roughly, let's see, six hundred, six ninety, about seven hundred, eight hundred thousand dollars right there. What we're also suggesting as a part of this is we did budget a portion of this project in the next biennial, twenty-five and twenty-six. And so what we're asking to do as well is to come back with a budget amendment, basically to shift those dollars from twenty-five and twenty-six and accelerate that into this biennial in order to support this contract. We will have sufficient cash flow during this time period in order to accommodate that. So consequently, as part of the CIP, we went out through twenty twenty-eight. Some of these dollars are tied to twenty-five and twenty-six to support this. We want to accelerate that into this by animal to cover the budget that we need, and that's going to require a budget amendment. So projects are moving out. We want to accelerate some of the appropriation in the future forward, basically. And that's how we intend to address the shortfall that you see specifically for this biennial.
Constable Mayhew.
Yeah, just follow up question. So that was very clear to me. So fantastic. Just help me remember, when we think about the entire CIP, which is six years. Is it? I'll use the term fully funded. In other words, does it lay out sources that equal all the expenditures? Or is it in fact have more expenditures on it than there is revenue? And that's something that sort of we'll need to solve as we get into those six years.
Expenditures do not exceed revenues within the plan itself. So by the end of twenty twenty-eight, we had predicted, I believe, five point five million dollars in any cash balance, basically, across the utility, utilities, basically. And so consequently, our revenues to exceed our expenditures.
So then just be clear in understanding, sorry, last follow-up.
Yes.
If we're pushing some projects out and pulling some in, so that made sense to me. It's still seen that since the total project is over, that that must, that the entire six years, we must end up with in total more expenditures than revenue, which seems like a problem we ought to address.
There, there will be a decrease in the cash balance by twenty twenty-eight of roughly the total that you see here. So we are in essence drawing upon our cash balance by then. So instead of having, say, a five point five million dollar in cash balance left by twenty twenty-eight, that's going to drop to roughly five hundred or five million dollars by that date.
So is there any other questions before we continue with to Constable Mayhew, Constable Benson?
The projects that were, could you repeat the projects that we're pushing?
The ten forty zone booster pump station, as well as the ten forty zone reservoir addition project.
And can, is there anyone here who can talk to us about the dangers of pushing, pushing those projects out?
Certainly. Can I just bring up one more point to before then? So council last May approved an agenda bill in agreement with the Soqami tribe. In essence, that would pay the city of Soqami and GFCs as well as a contribution to aid of construction for the construction of this project. They paid us the GFCs at the twenty twenty-two rate. However, as a part of that contract agreement, they are also going to pay us the difference between twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-four. I have estimated what that is for twenty twenty-three. That's roughly five hundred seventy-five thousand dollars more that we're going to get. And then when you tack on top of that twenty twenty-four, which I'm estimating on a roughly a construction. So it's inflated by the cost of construction, basically of five point seven seven percent. We're going to roughly, my estimate is to receive approximately nine hundred seventy-five thousand dollars more. So nearly a million dollars more that will likely come into the coffers of the city as a result of the GFCs will likely collect by the end of that agreement. So just want to put that out there. But yes, we can bring someone else up to talk about this.
That's a really great point. Thank you for bringing that up.
And also point out, they already, he said, already paid GFCs based on twenty twenty-two rate and provided one point one million for aeration improvements. So so far they've paid six point six million dollars toward this project. This project is important to keep going and, and make sure that we get it done in time. So, which we are currently hitting those marks. So Constable Johnson.
It's probably a true question. Is, is there an opportunity in within the next, within this six-year CIP to relook at rates?
Yes, yes, indeed. So we are starting to kind of formulate a plan. We know that we're going to go into the budget cycle next year. Before that, we want to engage in a new CIP process. We'll really just redo the CIP. In essence, we'd want to update that every two years. So we're going to go through an update. Probably starting towards the fall, winter of this year, leading into next year. As a part of that, we also want to conduct a new utility rate study. And so we'd be looking at, kind of starting that process off in September, October. Ideally of this year with likely an adoption date in their early part of next year.
And one more thing.
Follow on?
Yeah, is let's just say that the CIP magically works out exactly as it pencils out if we were to approve this. Are there any other projects that that are currently, that we can currently reasonably anticipate could eat into that fund balance in these kinds of numbers? Are, are there any that, that we can kind of look ahead with a crystal ball and say, you know, that bridge there, that's going to be two million under? Or over, I guess I should say. Meaning the fund balance drops very fast by twenty twenty.
So just this year, we've seen numbers kind of all over the board. Parkway came in well under.
Yeah.
Paving projects came in well under. This project's coming over. We've had projects that came right at the, at the numbers. As the Fed does their thing and, and puts pressure on the system to do what they need to do, which I'm sure Constable person may who could is probably, I'm sure you understand it. I don't. But what I do understand is, is prices go one direction pretty much, and that's up. So if you're asking me to predict whether a project we kick off in twenty twenty-six is going to come in at budget, I don't have the crystal ball. I, I could tell you that, that, that staff right there, our consultants and my staff, they do everything they can and execute every. Our consultants and my staff, they do everything they can and execute every trick in the book. By bundling projects and 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 bidding multiple projects for the same type of work at the same time. We even reach out to other jurisdictions to see if we can bundle work with theirs to try to keep those rates as low as possible. On this one, it came in over, um, and it's available, but I'm relieved it did not come in over as far as some of the other ones that Andrew told me back in the about in the hallway where, you know, some of these sewer plant projects are coming in three million over. Um, so I I I I don't have a specific answer, but but you have our word that we're doing everything we can to to keep your cost down.
My first question might be more relevant.
Oh, Councilor May, Mayhew.
Yeah, so. First off, just, I think the mayor's point, I I completely agree with this project, we must, we must do in my point of view. And we must keep it going, so I one hundred percent agree with the mayor's comments, my questions are not around this project, they're around what do we need to do elsewhere in order to afford this? So this is different. Remember, this is different, utilities work differently than all of our other capital spending, so in utilities. The operating and the capital all lumped together, it's all one thing, it all goes together, so when you look at fund balance. The fund balance is part of the plan. Now, there are some reserves in there, in fact, some which were required by bond requirements, so there's some reserves in there. And they're very specifically set intent with intention, and we relook at those, so they're there, but then beyond that, the fund balance happens because we look out at the projects, and remember, when we're doing this plan, we look out twenty years. Right, even though we're adopting a six-year rate and a six-year CIP, we look out twenty, that's how you do a a um a uh utilities plan, is you look out twenty years, and so you're building that fund balance to pay for the specific projects, because you don't wanna have rates bouncing around, right? So you have a sensible rate path. And you build fund balance until you do the project, then you draw it down, so fund balance per se doesn't tell you anything until you look at the whole plan, which is why Mr. Boutte was talking about exactly what he ran us through, hey, we're gonna move this here, we're gonna move that there, then this additional revenue source, so he's he's basically describing to us, described to us, the impact over that whole twenty years, so. Um, what I heard is, in summary, was we got some timing things that we're gonna ask you guys to sort out, we're gonna push some stuff out for the two years. We're gonna ask you to pull some in, so we get this done on time, but in total, we're still short. That shortage is covered by money that wasn't in the plan, income that wasn't in the plan, he says we're covered. So I'm satisfied with one thing that I want us to do, which is I want us, when we revise the uh, the, I guess it would be the CIP. I want us to put those other revenues in so that that's in there, so we remember that that's how we balance this guy, and therefore we don't see the fund balance dropping. Cause that should alarm, it's like, wait a minute, how are we gonna pay for the projects? We'll see, oh no, we actually do think the fund balance will be okay, because now we're counting this revenue, he'll put it in in the timing when it's coming in, so fine, he's pointed out, don't worry about, we've got enough cash to get it done. So I, my request is just please can we put what Mr. Boutte explained into the revised CIP, in which case I completely, I think he's well thought out and I support it.
Council Benson.
Yeah, it sounds like, sounds like you're describing depreciation, for those of us who only know basic store economics, but um I, one, the one thing that I'm still concerned about is we we're talking about uh pushing some stuff out a couple of years, which may may mean, I I don't, I'd like to hear from Mr. Boutte if there's any savings by depreciating those assets for an extra couple of years. Um, uh, but I, but the bigger point that I'd really like to know is what are our risks by pushing out these other pro- these other projects that were mentioned?
So these two projects in particular, I don't believe we're actually depreciating, they're actually projects tied to growth in the community. Especially in the ten forty zone, which is really the ridge itself, so consequently, um, it's, we're not deferring maintenance if that's what you're.
Just delaying growth.
We're just delaying certain projects because there isn't enough demand, I think, at the moment right now, and we're to support uh those two projects, and so.
Got it. Alright, so then, so then there's no actual risk involved in not doing them, it just sets up, is is it sets that growth aside, because it's, the growth isn't happening quite at that pace already? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, just one minor thing to add, we we do try to stay ahead of some of the these growth items with our utilities, the two CIP, utility CIP projects, we mentioned is the ten forty zone reservoir. Which the bulk of that work is actually two thousand twenty eight, that's construction, so we'd be slight proposing sliding the design one year. And then the other project is the ten forty booster pump station, uh, which we also have a seven hundred, seven oh five uh zone booster pump station, those projects could easily be lumped together, they're both involved adding a pump to a booster pump station, and the seven oh five is scheduled for uh the next uh budget cycle twenty four or twenty five, twenty six.
So you pull a Mike Chambliss and put a couple of projects together and save some money that way?
That might be an opportunity.
I like it.
Council Johnson.
Yeah, one of the uh things that I I always try to remember, and then sometimes I forget, but is that the enterprise funds are fundamentally different from other parts of the budget, where you know, if we're looking at trying to balance other parts of the budget, we have to make some really tough decisions on things because we are so limited in revenue sources. Um, here, uh, and you know, we might have to say cut someone from uh community development. You know, that's terrible, because it's gonna hold back permitting and stuff, but if we do this with uh some of these projects with sewer and stormwater and stuff. Yeah, if we're too stingy, then that means that we have blowouts like we did in the Williams edition all last year. Uh, and the longer these things start to fall apart, uh, then the more damage they can do to adjacent systems. Uh, which just makes the bill go up and up and up, so I guess I'm trying to say is that if we're talking about things that make sure that the water's flowing the right way and that you can drink it, and it goes downstream, you know? Uh, then I think that it is incumbent upon us to make sure that we are paying for those things, and that we're making sure that um, uh, that we're uh using those tools that are available to us specifically for enterprise funds that are not true for other parts of the budget. I mean, these, these are essential services, we, we can't have our pipes breaking.
Councilor Mayhew.
If I, if you guys, if I could just make one more comment, just um about kind of how enterprise funds work, how the utility fund works. Is, so this city is a cash basis taxpayer, okay, blah blah blah, what does that mean? Here's what it means, we don't do depreciation. Depreciation is a concept that says I spend the money upfront, the cash goes out upfront. But I sort of take the expense over the time period benefited. So if I spend a hundred bucks each in its five years, I just say it's twenty years of cost, twenty bucks of cost every year. But the cash went upfront. So that's not what we do here. We do what's actually, think of it just as the exact opposite of that, we do what's called sinking fund. A sinking fund is sort of a similar concept, I'm gonna put money away, so I'm gonna have to spend a hundred bucks in the future. So I'm gonna put twenty bucks away each of five years, so that in the future, when I need to spend a hundred bucks, I'll have it. So it's sort of like, it's it's the inverse, so if you wait longer to do the project. Notwithstanding the the concerns you have to focus on that uh uh that were just brought up. If, if you push it out, you don't save any money, in fact, if anything, you might cost yourself more money because of of uh inflation. Right, but um, you you know, there's really no savings by pushing it out. There's cash flow timing, so it's all about cash flow timing, which is what Mr. Boutte was talking about when he talked about the different that, you know, he was kind of talking about lining that up, making sure the cash flow is there, and then in total that it would all be covered. So I I just thought it might be useful just to mention that, so just because as we think about these things going forward, just kind of think, okay, it's about it's about paying for the operating costs, plus, you know, putting this money away for these various projects, these sinking funds for all these projects, we're gonna have to to do in the future, and then that's why we charge the rates that we charge. And uh, by the way. Biggest way you can get into trouble is a city that runs utilities. Is don't put enough money away, hey, we wanna hold the rates down, let's not put a, let's, let's just sort of not put enough money away, and we'll wait to do those projects till later, and so many cities have ended up in so much trouble. Especially in a state, two states to the south, that Mr. Chambliss could tell us at about at nauseam, so um, we we've just been very good about staying ahead of that curve. We make the tough decisions, our residents have supported us on this, and so, yeah, um, I I just, I think we're doing great. I think Mr. Boutte's analysis was fantastic, I just wanna make sure we capture it, you know, into our documents and then stay the course.
Any other conversation, discussion? He's seen in, I was in favor of this project, see, we're approving their agenda bell, see I. Any opposed name? Alright, so the, we are awarding prospect construction, a contract for water reclamation fa- facility phase three improvement, so thank you. Moving on to AB twenty three dash zero eight eight, awarding contract for installation and site preparation for Centennial Fields, inclusive park. Council Benson, would you please read the summary and motion?
This agenda bill seeks approval to award the contract for NuX inc- for site preparation and installation of play equipment at Centennial Fields, Inclusive Park. Uh, move to adopt resolution number sixteen fifty seven, awarding the site preparation and installation of Centennial Fields, Inclusive Park to Nu- NuX Construction. And authorize the mayor to sign.
Let's move by Council Benson, second by Councilman Johnson, is there any public comment regarding this item? Let's see, anyone in City Hall raise their hands, anyone online? Nor anyone online raising their hands? Council, is there any discussion? Your Pro Tim Holloway?
So uh, forgive me, this is another one, uh, we're, and I plead that you do approve this as presented, I just wanna make aware uh, overall, those projects is about thirty five thousand, thirty six thousand dollars over for the life of the project. Uh, staff has done uh a lot of maneuvering to minimize that overage. But we're still gonna pull about thirty six thousand dollars out of, out of reserve, out of our in fund balance. To make this one whole, but thirty five thousand dollars doesn't keep me up at night too often. Um, and this is a good project to move forward, so. Again, just because it was over, that's why I kept it off consent out of committee, wanted us to aware when we're doing these kind of things.
Council Benson?
I'm. Withdraw.
Any other comments or discussion? CNN, all those in favor, see I. Any opposed name? So it's unanimous, and it passes for the awarding contract for installation and site preparation for Centennial Fields, Inclusive Park. Next item, AB twenty three dash zero eight nine, awarding contract for planning services for parks, recreation, open space and trail trails plans, Council Benson, would you please read the summary and motion?
City of Snawami seeks to contract with Kimley Horn to update and produce the twenty twenty four Snawami Parks Recreation Open Space and Trails Plan. Move to adopt resolution number six, sixteen fifty eight, awarding the contract to update and produce the the twenty twenty four Snawami Parks and Recreation Open Space and Trails Plan to Kimley Horn and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Move by Council Benson, same by Mayor Pro Tim Holloway for the post plan, is there any public comment regarding this item? I'm not seeing anyone in City Hall, nor anyone online raising their hand. Though any discussion, council? Your Pro Tim Holloway?
In this one, is one is uh over the original appropriation. Uh, however, we have vacant positions, which with this action, we intend not to fill to pay for this in the parks area. So again, that was my logic of not being consent, at least that we have visibility when we're doing things like that, but do recommend moving forward with this.
Um, Councilor Mayhew?
Um, I have a question, I, in the budget impact section of the agenda bill. In the second paragraph, there's a discussion about paying for this out of a vacant position, but we're still gonna keep the vacant position, and then some use of the word encumbrance, which doesn't make any sense to me, you don't encumber positions, so that didn't make any sense, so. I just didn't understand what this was saying, I'm hoping to get some clarification, why, if if we're gonna pay for this by not filling a vacant position, then shouldn't we, I don't understand why we wouldn't eliminate that position?
Our Budget Manager Boutte?
So, um, I think what we're trying to propose is maybe just to freeze the position, if that's a better use of the word or term uh, for the most part, at least through February of twenty twenty four, and then provided that we still have budget of that position available to us at that date, we can then potentially go out for that position as authorized by council in the budget. Um, regarding the word of the use encumbered, um, um, probably sloppy with that word, um, in essence, what I was trying to describe is, in essence, uh, council has already approved several agenda bills um tied to the comprehensive plan. I believe one was the transportation and utilities element, and the other one was the land use and housing element. In which we did not budget at all for that sort of outside contract work. And so, in essence, there have been multiple positions open within CD in which we took those vacancies through a specific date and in this case through June of twenty twenty three, and applied it to those contracts, basically. And so that was what I was implying by the use of the word encumbered, is we had encumbered those vacant positions already through, from January through June of twenty twenty three. Basically, in the budget that was associated with that.
Encumbered the budget.
Yeah, the budget, yes, yeah, not the physicians, right, it's the budget, the dollars tied to the position that we're encumbered, so. In essence, with this specific um agenda bill, what we're proposing is to use the sixty thousand dollars that council had already set aside for some of this work that we're proposing as a part of this, but then also we need to keep that position open between approximately by this length in order to make up for that difference of the total contract, and so that's hopefully sufficient explanation.
Council Benson?
Um, and I think a a lot of what Kimley Horn is going to be doing is the kind of work that would be done by that planner. So it feels like an appropriate use of uh of those funds. Um, I did speak today, I, when I was going over the Kimley Horn stuff, it had uh some references at the end, and I called them that I had spoke to a couple of them, uh, and it sounds like they do a bang up job, at least from the perspective of the references that they listed, uh, but I'm, one of them was uh in Arizona where the Kimley Horn planned out a, an enormous um, uh, recreation space, uh, thirty thousand uh acre recreation space, uh, they talked about the creativity of Kimley Horn. The uh, their excellent ability to engage the citizenry and get their ideas and and address those, uh, they also uh talked about how, when they had problems with an architect. Um, they went to Kimley Horn, Kimley Horn fixed it, they 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 made the adjustments necessary to address the the issues that the that the city had, so it seems to me that they're, uh, you you know, the the two of the three that I spoke to. I I only spoke to two of them, um, they were both very happy with the work that Kimley Horn did, and said they were high on community engagement, high on creativity.
Council Mayhew?
Yeah, so, thank you for the explanation, Mr. Boutte, I, uh, with that in mind, I think we ought to, if we go forward with this, I think we ought to specifically freeze that position until that time period to make sure that we don't double spend that, um. So. I I think we should do that, um, I think, taking into account the comment that was just made, I don't, I'm satisfied that the work would be done well by this contractor, I wanna raise the question whether the work should be done. Regardless of the quality that it may be, so we're talking about spending a hundred and forty eight thousand, hundred and forty nine thousand dollars. To update a plan. In the six years, and I guess we do this every eight years, in the six years I've been on the council, I do not recall ever. ever having anything that we did refer to this plan, to this post. So I believe that this is a plan that's done for the sake of doing a plan. Because the state says we got to update our plan. And actually doesn't impact, as far as I can tell, what we do. And it seems to me that every day we make decisions about what we're going to do based on the plans we currently have. And so I'm unclear why we need to spend that massive amount of money. Why do I think that's a massive amount of money? Well, that's equal to two years worth of property tax increases for the city. We could, we don't spend this, we can forego two years of property tax increases before we've used up that mon- that, we've covered that amount of money. So when we talk about spending that much money for a plan that isn't going to change what we do. I, um, I think we're misspending the money. I don't think we should do this. I think we should take the plan we have, do the minimal necessary updates to it. And continue on as we are unless we have a different reason for doing it, which is something's wrong with our plan. We don't know what, we, we need a whole new plan. Right now, I, I don't see any basis to spend a hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars to update a plan, which isn't going to change a thing we do day to day.
So I can turn this over to our interim city administrator, also known as our Parks and Public Works Director Chambliss regarding this plan.
You're a hundred percent correct that the majority of plans that are, are created sit on shelves and, and, and don't really you know, get used. Um, that's not the way I operate. Um, this plan actually goes beyond the post plan. Earlier, when we were speaking about budget and, and capital improvements, one of the, the priorities that was discussed and, and this plan will, or this work will address is a re-evaluation of our park system. To write, put the right amenities in the right spot for today. When, when stuff was built twenty years ago, it was done then. It's time to reassess that before we spend millions of dollars replacing all the equipment that's coming due. And we thought at that time, and things may have changed since then. We thought it was at that time, it would be a good idea to have a good comprehensive evaluation of those activities, of those locate, locations, of the uses of, of time. I mean, for example, you know, twenty years ago, ADA compliant playgrounds meant that there was a dial somebody could turn from a, from a chair, uh, you know, the industry has, has gone so much beyond that. I mean, we see that over at, at River, River View, uh, Park. So that's a huge component of this plan, and a lot of the cost comes for my insistence, I'll take the blame of having six public meetings. Not two, not one that no one shows up at. We're going to do six throughout this town. And make sure that we are where people are. So it's, there's no barriers for anybody to get to us.
So the primary reason is not.
That's true. May, Mayhew?
Excuse me, just a quick follow. So to my point that I made earlier, this is not primarily because of a comprehensive plan update requirement. This is primarily because you think we need to do this.
Correct.
It's time and this needs doing. Yes, great. We'll update the comp plan along with it, but the reason we're doing this is it's time and this needs doing.
Correct. And this will map out our, I'm sorry. Okay, this will map out our path going forward. So it's not Mike's idea that we're pulling this stuff out or Dylan's idea. This gives us a roadmap that the citizens laid out for us. Um, just moving court, tennis courts, basketball courts, that's going to be one meeting at community because we got to move stuff around. Um, and we need that public input as we saw by the outreach we received. So that is we're, we're really going after four birds with one, one stone with this project. And yes, it is expensive. But I see the value there, uh, because it could save us from making very expensive mistakes in the future.
Councilor Christensen?
Um, yeah, so I had raised my hand initially just because it was my understanding that, that we were going forward and then had the multiple pieces of public engagement at different locations. And, and I thought it was value added for that reason, because we did not have that overall um, plan in place. And so that was, I've raised my hand before. I'm sorry, go ahead. Um, I did just have one other quick question. Um, I know that we, um, received the request for qualifications. And that that was not part of the original request for I think qualifications at the outset, right? And that we located this particular contractor through MRSC. It's my understanding we do that fairly regularly. And so it's not completely atypical, correct?
We typically get better results from RFQs or RFP, um, but this time we did not. So with, with those results, we then use the MSRC roster and some experience that we had as staff members working in the consultant field to identify a company that both had the availability, which is more difficult given the comp plan update that we see going on now in King County. As well as the competency to do a park, a very thorough park trails, recreation review on the scale that, uh, Mike described earlier.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Johnson?
A hundred percent agree with what Councilmember Mehe was saying about some of the surveys that get done. Just update things because we're supposed to. Someone said we are supposed to. Sometimes, uh, it's it, it makes it more convincing to whomever we are using that as the face to communicate. Be able to fall back on that. One of the things we talked about earlier, maybe it was last year, was about speed limits along two or two. And I was like, man, I feel like maybe this section right here, we missed the mark. Okay, but based on what? This is based on a traffic analysis. If something goes wrong, we can always point to, okay, but this is what the expert said, not what Councilmember Johnson thought or felt on that sunny day with good visibility on the road, right? And when uh, when Mr. Chambliss tells me that he needs something. I don't know, eleven times out of ten, I'm probably going to believe him. So anyway. Same with that, um, I, I think that, uh, I think that some of my skepticism with regard to this kind of study has been somewhat alleviated.
Councilor Washington?
So, thank you, Mike. Thank you for adding some color to it. Um, I had some of the same concerns, but thank you for coming and adding a lot of color to it and just, uh, give me some background on it. So I appreciate that.
Councilor Mayhew and then Councilor Johnson?
Yep, um, Mr. Chambers, thank you very much. Actually, that completely addresses my concern. And I appreciate that very much. And I really appreciate the effort you're putting into this and the way you're approaching this. So I completely support that. I, I, I like Councilmember Johnson will support you eleven out of twelve times. Dylan, I'll support twelve out of twelve times though. So something to think about, you know.
Can we put them in charge of the general fund?
But, uh, no, based on your explanation now, I, I support this. I, I do ask though, and I, I think Mr. Booty earlier was going to perhaps get up and address this. I'm not sure. But I, I did make the comment that I do think we should put the freeze in just to make sure that this funding. And, and again, fantastic job of finding the funding. This makes sense. But I'd like to see us just, um, formalize that so that we don't, um, somehow double count this later and get ourselves into oops or forget what we did. But, uh, I'll now support this.
I was just going to add, there's a discussion item on the F and A committee regarding staffing. So this would be one of those, certainly one of those comments that we've included as part of that staffing plan. So, I guess.
Any other comments? Councilor Benson?
And I think that when we consider what we, what, how much was the River View Park? It was like four hundred.
Four, four seventy-six.
Four seventy, four seventy-six, when we consider that's what it costs to replace the park, having a plan in place. I, I fully agree with you. I, it makes me sick when we have these studies that are just make-work imaginary tasks sent down from the state, um, that are just an absolute waste of our citizens' money when we when we want to pay our firefighters more, our police officers more. Um, so I'm totally with you on that. Uh, this, this seems like uh, since our parks and our trails are such a huge part of the experience of living in Snoqualmie, that this is something we want to have a good plan. We've got a guy who's going to follow a plan and he's got a whole team that's going to follow it with him. So, uh, I think, I think this is a slam dunk.
Come in, Councilor Johnson?
Yeah, just wanted to, uh, point out that I think that some of our, uh, playgrounds have a distinct lack of swings.
I'm thinking adult obstacle courses. Let's get, you know, people out there working out, right? Any other comment, comments, discussion?
Just.
Councilor Mayhew, one more time?
Yeah, I have a question. I just, um, just hit me. Um, is this being paid for out of capital funds or operating funds? And if it's operating funds, have we thought about whether some or all of this could be paid out of capital funds?
Um, well, until I would say gap rules potentially apply until a project is actually formalized as part of the CIP, then we would then want to record this as a capital expense, but consequently, because there isn't any sort of project at this moment, we'd want to count it as an operating expense. So.
Councilor Johnson?
I was wondering, um, if this does count as capital. And I guess it's referring to stuff, I don't know. Can this count toward capital?
Not yet.
Yeah, not yet is the proper.
There's a way to admit that it can though. Not yet.
No, not yet. I, a capital project has to arise from that in order for us to expense this as a part of that project. So um, in essence, if you've got, you know, for example, if we had a specific project, a utility project, we had to do some sort of conceptualization or analysis tied to that, then yes, we can expense it as a part of the capital project. But in this case, because nothing has arisen from the study yet in order to, that will consequently result in a capital project. It's better than tie it to our operating funds and we don't want to run afoul of the state auditor's office if we've categorized it inappropriately. So.
Okay. So any further discussion? If not, let's go to a vote. All those in favor, CI?
Hi, hi.
Any opposing? Alright, congratulations. We will be doing the post planning consulting services. So, thank you. And is there any further report from Parks and Public Works Committee?
You haven't gotten enough?
We have.
I think we're good.
Um, Finance Administration Committee?
Uh, no report.
Alright, so move on to the mayor's report. It's a lot going on. Um, so Washington State Transportation Commission has opened public comment period regarding the application that the city submitted for the jurisdictional transfer of the Snoqualmie Parkway to Wash Dot, and it will run through the end of this month. So four more days. Um, if transferred Wash Dot, then we'll be responsible for ongoing maintenance of the road curb to curb. The city would continue maintaining the landscaping and the median alongside both sides of the parkway. And there's other items that can be up for negotiations, um, such as if there's an emergency pothole repair or something like that. There's all kinds of things that the city can negotiate on. If you remember last year, um, the legislature's approved the move ahead Washington Transportation Package, which included repaving the Snoqualmie Parkway, which connects State Route eighteen to State Route two oh two. This funding represents eight percent, eighty percent of the total cost, which covers the pavement impact caused by heavy trucking transportation serving the region rather than local traffic. So we believe the traffic levels remain the same after transfer to the state, since the parkway already connects two state highways, and it will save our community millions of dollars in the future for maintenance and capital expenses. So, um, in July, I will actually be representing to the Washington State Transportation Commission regarding the project. And, um, and then also commenting on public comments that, that we have received and addressing, um, some of the questions. So and as part of all this, the parkway is actually going to be, we have repaving project, um, that is already started. And right now they're working on ADA accessibility through the month of July and then paving in August. And there will be updates on our website from our communications group, um, website and social media posts. So watch for those. They'll be pushing it out, um, as we know what the plan is for, for each of the weeks. So that would be coming out. Um, last week, we held a meeting here at City Hall with multiple jurisdictions that are either responsible for provide service or response to Echo Glen. And, um, King County Councilmember Sarah Perry and her staff helped convene the meeting and Councilor Christensen. Um, Police Captain Lynch and interim Fire Chief Bailey, um, all attended. We also had, um, a representative from North Bend, the Washington State Patrol, the King County Sheriff, the King County Office of Emergency Management, King County Executive's Office, King County State, um, Department of Children, Youth and Families, who actually runs the facility. Um, and then Washington State Office of Superintendent of Schools. And then, um, we had representatives Callan Ramos and Representative from, um, Schreier's, her, her district director, as well as Department of Natural Resources, which actually owns the property. So we talked about a variety of different things. And, um, one is, you know, they've already received funding about eight million dollars for, for the fence and for other security measures. Um, and they recently signed a labor contract through the state that's providing for better wages and, and they're going to be starting a four four-ten schedule, because, um, as everyone has difficulty, we do, and they do, in trying to hire people. Um, they have a new superintendent that is starting in early July. And we've established that there's going to be regular meetings with a new superintendent in our, our police department and, um, the sheriff, who actually report or goes to all the different incidents and then we are, um, called at times as well. So so those that are in close, close proximity, we're going to actually start having regular meetings with them. Um, there will be more information to be provided, um, in the near future, I think by convening the meeting, it actually raised visibility with each organization. And also, um, reinforcing importance of open communication and safety protocols. So, so there's, um, more information coming. There are different ways to opt in for emergency notification, um, from you can go to kingcounty.gov backslash alert or do notify me on our city website. You want to be notified for, um, emergencies. So and I guess one more thing, we have July fourth parade and events coming up. So it's going to be a big day around here. And then we have just a variety of wonderful events coming up in July and August, such as movies and movies and movies in the park, music in the park. Um, and we also have big truck day, I think Thursday. So that is my mayor's report. And now we will move on to, I guess, commission, any commission committee liaison reports? Or regional reports? Councilor Christensen?
I guess I can say King Conservation District, Matt Lastik, they're currently reviewing their draft strategic plan as well as a draft renewal outreach or rate renewal outreach. Um, so that information will be forthcoming. In addition, they're going to be presenting at um, King County Council on their annual report and everything else. In addition, for SCA, there's a summer social coming up. If anyone would like to attend, it's my understanding you'll probably be in Kent, but we're not a hundred percent sure. That'll be on July twenty-sixth. Uh, for the YMCA, they are looking forward to, um, getting more information and and the community center expansion going forward, which I know we'll be having before council hopefully this month. Excuse me, in July, if not this month.
In July, yes.
Lots of excitement there.
Yes, there is. Any other liaison, okay, regional committees? So I guess that brings us to the next item, which is executive session per RCW forty-two dot three zero one one zero one G to evaluate the qualifications of an applicant for public employment or to review the performance of a public employee. We anticipate probably forty we'll think we'll go for thirty minutes.
Can always make it longer, as it goes.
Thirty minutes. Um, so we'll take a five-minute recess and then then we would be back, we're just kind of nine fifteen. But those attending would be City Attorney Lenahan and interim city administrator Shambless. And no action is anticipated following conclusion of the executive session. So council adjourn directly from the executive session and not return to open session. And then city clerk will be informed of the concluding times. And will be reflected in the meeting. So with that said, we will, um, we will probably do this in the um, I guess the room upstairs, or you want to do it on here? As we, we'll do it down here and everyone else can be excused. Yeah. So, great. So we will end our our current session on Zoom and then go into executive session. So, thank you.